Seventeenth, my birthday also is coming up a couple of days after that.
Okay.
I'm supposed to be born on the seventeenth, but I lingered there. I was late. We have art shows. We have so many Easter, so many different things coming up that are very positive and happy things. We also remember our past board adjournment, who passed away on the twentieth of March, seven years ago. So in the midst of all the remembering of the happy things, we all remembered that sad things when Spike, it's Patrick, died. I wanted to ask Ginger if she would read an Irish blessing. She's our official reader, so instead of me doing it, I asked Ginger if she would read an Irish blessing for us.
Okay. Old Irish blessing. May the road rise up to meet you. May the wind be always at your back. May the sunshine warm upon your face. The rains fall soft upon your fields. And until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of his hand. May God be with you and bless you. May you see your children's children. May you be poor in misfortune, rich in blessings. May you know nothing but happiness from this day forward. May the road rise up to meet you. May the wind be always at your back. May the warm rays of the sun fall upon your home. And may the hand of a friend be always near. May green be the grass you walk on. May blue be the skies above you. May pure be the joys that surround you. May true be the hearts that love you.
Thank you very much, Ginger. We can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent.
Do we approve of the agenda?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Dorchman, a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. And do we have any citizens' comments for items on the agenda? Thank you, Ms. Verderami. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Ms. Powers has made the motion. Mr. Kennedy has seconded it. Do we have any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Okay, we're to presentation. Presentation A, we're to recognize Crystal River High School's construction project award.
Good afternoon. Give me a second to find it.
You may have two seconds.
Got it. River High School's construction project for receiving the 2013 Architectural Showcase Award of Merit for the high school category from the Florida Educational Facilities Planners I went back into the files and couldn't help but dig out the cover sheet from the master plan and was actually even surprised to see the 2008 date on it as a way of reminding that we've all been working on this for a long time. We've been through two design phases, two overlapping concurrent bidding phases, and two construction phases. To, a couple of months ago, VRPH submitted the project to the Florida Educational Facilities Planners Association Winter Conference Architectural Showcase. The entries were judged in seven categories, or seven criteria, I'm sorry, innovative response to educational program, aesthetics and use of materials, flexibility for community use, technology, provision, green design, relationship of spaces, and expandability, and finally, Before reviewing the award material with you, I'd like to ask the following team members to come up and join me. I believe Mr. McCoy is here, Martin McCoy, Crystal River High, representing Crystal River High. Representing VRPH, we have George Thomas, Senior Project Manager. Representing Burrell Engineering, we have Troy Burrell, President. Representing ACA Construction Group, the construction manager, we have Gary Goodman, Project Manager, oh, Anton Duffy. We also have from the Facilities and Construction Department, Clyde Douglas, Project Manager. And I don't think anybody slipped in on me, so. As I go through the award material, I'll read some of the comments about the projects. Some of it's difficult to read. Yeah, under the site development and relationship of spaces criteria, the site was developed with an internal focus of varying courtyards allowing the students to interact in a safe and secure environment. The building facades are set at a subdued scale in relationship to congregational areas. The result is interactive spaces that create outdoor experiences and enhance natural daylighting Green design criteria, the school's designed to meet the Florida Green Building Coalition Design Standards. The incorporation of sustainable features and the use of SEP TED, which stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design principles make this an environmentally friendly and secure school. And here you see the fully completed master plan. Aesthetics and use of materials, the challenge of the initial master planning effort was to integrate the buildings that were required to remain into a unified campus design. To affirm the old Florida brick motif, the design of the buildings utilized a combination of concrete structures with brick accent banding and full wall brick veneer elevations. Finally, innovative response to the educational program. The existing school was largely built in the sixties. The new design addresses issues not considered in school design back then such as enhanced campus security, natural lighting in classrooms, instructional technology, library and media centers, accessible restaurants for special needs students, and clear, simple circulation paths throughout the campus. The resulting build-out provides a like-new learning community for Crystal River. I feel you all joined me in thanking you for the opportunity to present this award to you. Thank you.
I'd like to also recognize Pat Simon, who was originally on this thing. Why don't you guys come around the front so people can see your fronts instead of your sides and backs?
You know, I'd like to just make one comment.
Just one.
Due to the brilliant design of Craig Deloitte, and I just want to recognize his talents and his efforts on behalf of this school.
Thank you. It is very, it's beautiful.
And it works.
And it works, wow. It's awesome. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
And Alan, you have some photographs? Was that what was part of the house?
Yeah, we showed you where, just electronic copies. There's four boards.
So where are you going to put those?
I didn't suggest.
He's just going to put them home in his living room.
Maybe at the school.
They know it must be.
Oh, that's true. They know how it's supposed to stay looking like that.
It's nice in the outside hallway.
Okay. We'll decide. All right, Academy of Environmental Science Annual Presentation. Mr. Stockcheck.
Good afternoon. I'd like to start off by introducing our academy's chairman of the board of directors. Please welcome Mrs. Betty Vanzen.
I'd like to thank all of you for sponsoring us at the Academy of Environmental Science, and it's my pleasure to get to introduce the board members who are here. Our treasurer, Mr. Sam Hurst. Our secretary of the board, Mr. Shel Leeper. Deputy Joe Colari is vice chairman. Andrew Tarnowski is on the board. And our newest board member is Brian Tambasco. We have two members who are not able to be with us today, but we all want to say thank you very, very much for all your support and everything you do for the Academy.
Thank you, Betty.
I hope all of you received, I sent out as an email, a copy of this last week. Did you all get it?
We did.
If anybody needs a copy, I have it. Basically, I tried to highlight basically some of the things of last spring and this fall where we're at currently. Of course, we had a couple of changes in faculty when Mr. Mulligan moved up to New England, hired Ms. Ashley Miller, and she's doing a wonderful job, certified in marine science and master's degree in marine science. And Mr. Pierre Santos, which was great because he's certified not only in social studies but mathematics. And being a small school offering the subjects, I need people from multi-certifications. It worked out. Also, we are so pleased to have a part-time guidance counselor for the first time, Mrs. Sander Terry. So that's really helping out and not putting a burden back on the high school guidance counselors, which we had to constantly stay in communication with. The rest of it is basically enrollment. You see right now, we're running ninety-three students in grades nine through twelve, and it's a pretty good mixture between Citrus High and La Canto, Crystal River High. La Canto seems to be the highest every time. FCAT scores, very good, again. And of course, assessments, the biology, hundred percent passing. And the algebra is eighty-seven percent. Two students dismissed, one by two points, one by four. A lot of repairs were done. The old kitchen area is now being gutted with a big conference table we can use as a conference room and also a small classroom. I could fit about nine students around that table for a small room. I hope you looked at some of the attachments, the newspaper articles. We try to get our students involved with community, environmental community activities as much as possible. The one that was running on WYKE, Art Jones, One Rake at a Time, I don't know if you got a chance to see that. The students went out, took at Libya, out of Hunter Springs, two tractor-trailer loads. They worked and took that out. Again, we always participate in our Coastal Cleanup Day. And one page, we had our students go with Florida Department of Environmental Protection Biology Class. This is back on February seventh. They planted over three thousand longleaf pine sanctuaries on roughly thirty-five acres of one of their preserves. We're proud of our students. Is there any questions that you have, any comments from what you received? Oh, the first time ever. As being in a school, for the first time, we were notified, we get the A-plus money. So that really is nice.
How's about your enrollment again?
Oh, the enrollment on the chart, Pat, you see it?
Is it included in the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Give them a minute to examine.
Thanks.
Some little things that make us very successful that we feel and makes us just feel good. I have one student that came from an alternative school in the county, begged me to take him in, and I took him in. He was there because he liked to fight constantly at the base school. Came in a fall, passed every subject, no discipline referrals. Begged me to keep him this spring semester so he could make up courses that he didn't in ninth grade. No referrals, no fights, going wonderful.
Great.
So these are some of the things that just make you feel proud, what the teachers are doing at the school. It's still more like a big family atmosphere at the school.
Mr. Stockcheck, looking at the results of the test, they're very impressive except for the English AP.
The English AP, some of the problems on the English AP, I don't have another classroom or another teacher, so every eleventh grader that is accepted went into that AP last year.
I'm sorry, everybody, I take the same course.
And the problem we have was that about half of those students, I think it was twenty-seven students was in there, they took it in a fall semester. And then we have January, February, March, April, and autumn, May before they take the AP exam. It's too much time off, so we're offering only AP classes in the spring semester.
Would those be the same students, though? I mean, you don't typically have students that are there on your eleventh grade.
No, they're not the same. And we're looking at doing enrollment in lieu of the AP for some classes.
So the students that took the AP exam and didn't pass, it may not have been the students who took the class at your school.
Yes, they were.
You had students, eleventh graders, that were there all year long?
No, there was two groups. There was a group, some of them that took the AP, took it back, yeah, some at the base school, and then the group.
Yeah.
Well, we couldn't give the AP at our school. Southern states accreditation says we can't give it, so the students had to go and take it at the base schools. But they were assigned to us where they took the course.
They took the course.
Yes, yes. That's accurate results on that. So we're looking at that, we're looking to make improvements on that, and we're looking at going to do enrollment courses.
Is virtual, has that been an option for any of the students if they're wanting to take courses maybe that you don't offer that semester, and they want to be at the Academy?
Yes, we do have, we have a good number of students on Florida Virtual.
Do they take AP with that, too, do you know?
I don't believe, I haven't taken AP via Florida Virtual. We have some doing do enrollment, going out to the college in La Canto. Any other comments or questions about the program? We're live in one.
Good.
Good, and hopefully things are progressing on the board. Okay.
All right.
So it's a lingering question, right?
Yeah, I figured, absolutely lingering question. Things are progressing.
Okay.
Fine, then. Anything else?
I think you've covered it, Mr. Van. Thanks.
And Mr. Sam told me financially, we're okay. Let's never say.
Well, he says you are, then you are.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate the time and all the support you give the school.
Thank you. Okay, business and support services, Mr. Burkha, while he's coming up here, I need to make my little spiel. I'll be abstaining from voting for sort of Florida statute one one, two point three one four three, as I perceive a potential conflict in this matter.
Thank you, school board members. Mr. Sam, I'm here to request this change order be approved. It returns unspent money and owner direct purchase orders to the construction contract.
Sure.
The construction contract, as you know, has a provision for direct purchase. Once the general contract is let, the subcontractors submit items for direct purchase. That comes to you in the form of a change order. Those amounts then come out of the general contract, and we spend them directly. We pay the vendors directly. When we get to the end of the job, and typically the larger jobs, there's more money left in those direct purchase orders that were, all that money was in the contract that was bid. So our direct purchase agreement provides for unspent money to then be transferred back into the construction contract. Because if we don't do that, what we found happened was we had difficulty capitalizing or maximizing the direct purchase. Because subs would tend to underestimate the amount they could purchase, knowing that if they didn't spend it all, they were essentially giving up their profit.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Approval of Page One, Crystal River High School Change Order Number Seventeen.
Second. With a motion by Ms. Dorchman and a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rondio. I already did.
We're going through this again.
Made me sad and happy at the same time. Thank you.
I'd like the board to ask board for approval of Budget Amendment Number Five. Draw your attention to a couple of highlights on page three in the general fund. Under Increases to Appropriations, about halfway down the page, you'll see a new budget item to cover Duke attorney fees. Hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars has been added to the budget. And in Food Services, you'll see two new grants under Food Services. Those were applied, grants that were applied for by teachers, one at La Canto Middle School and one at La Canto Primary School. I believe in general, they're working on gardens, vegetable gardens at the schools, and these are under the Food Services because this is a Department of Agriculture grant.
Will they be able to eat whatever it is they grow?
I think they might.
All right, cool.
On page three, about the adjustments with the Corrections Corporation of America.
I don't see it.
Oh, it's under, it's page three, under Increases/Decreases to Appropriations. It's the third line, and it says Adjust Corrections Corporation of America, the actuals.
Can't give you, yeah, I found it. I can't give you any more detail of that right now. Pardon me? Oh, it's a change in the DJJ account. There's a matching revenue to it at the top also.
Comes with the FEFP.
It's money that we transfer over to the DJJ facility on Cypress Creek.
Need a motion?
Go ahead. No, go, go, go.
I move to approve the Budget Amendment Number Five, January two thousand and twelve.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any further comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
The next item I have is asking for your approval of the FEFP Full-Time Equivalent Student and Student Transportation Audit Report. This was emailed to you by the Auditor General on February fifth. I have additional copies, so if you need to see one. Under the FTE, they sampled eight schools. They found findings at seven of the schools. This resulted in twenty-two findings. Fifteen of the thirty-two students involved were ESAL students, and twelve of ninety-nine findings were in the ESC program. Had exceptions there. This resulted in a negative two point three seven one seven FTE, and it's a weighted negative twenty point oh five six three, and which will result in a loss of about seventy thousand dollars to the district. The district has addressed these findings, and they're working on making sure that they don't reoccur. Also, in transportation, the auditor sampled two hundred and sixty-one students out of eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty reported transportation trips, and they had six findings, and this resulted in a negative adjustment of five students. Dollar amount, we won't know until the DOE calculates it.
I read through all this, the findings, come to see what was happening, and I was amazed at just how specific the things came in. I mean, they've really looked at the different issues, different items. And I'd asked Mr. Blocker about the addressing of the findings, you know, at the different schools for something maybe that was missed that shouldn't have been taught, and he said, right now, the schools are addressing it. ESAL, the English for Students, both languages, they had to follow up on that, and then said ESC follow up on, to be sure that everything was as it should be. So everything is being followed up at this moment, so that it won't occur again.
They're small issues. Yes.
But even when you don't have a student, ESAL students stay in a class for one hour still, they're supposed to be there, so.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the Education Finance Full-Time Equivalent Students and Student Transportation Audit Report for the fiscal year ended June thirty of two thousand and twelve.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Dorchman. We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Ms. Dorchman. Do we have any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Ms. Rondio. All right, Mr. Shook, we've got the golden rod. We need a couple of minutes to look at that.
Mr. McCoy, you just trying to sneak out? I just wanted to just take a minute while we're reading over this to just thank you. I know we saw the paper today, and I'm going to miss you being my son's principal, but I want to thank you for always loving our kids and for just doing, just a super jog at hugging them and making sure that they have a home every day when they went to school.
Thank you. And. That somebody cares about us.
That somebody cares. So, but I will tell you, I'm really happy that you're going to take care of yourself, and you're going to still take care of our kids. You're just going to do it in a different way.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Thomas.
No, thank you.
Anybody have a, oh, we need a motion to approve?
I need to approve the inspection report.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. A second. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Ms. Powers has made the motion. Mr. Kennedy has seconded it. Do we have any questions or comments?
Just also, Mr. Stevens is going to be missed. He's done just a fabulous job in our district and our students and our teachers and staff, and.
But he will still work for us through FISB.
He is still going to be helping us through FISB.
Right.
You know, you can't get wine item vetoed on some of these ways.
Yeah, beside, it doesn't work.
It doesn't seem to work.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Planning and Growth Management, Mr. Dixon. All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve setting the school board meeting for May 14th for public hearing on items D2, 3, 4, and 5.
Mr. Kennedy's made the motion. Ms. Deutschman has seconded it. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Budget update.
Yes, ma'am. Since we've last met, we have met with all our district administrators in reference to preparing their budgets. Also, we've met with all the capital budget administrators to start preparing their budget and looking at ways to fund the technology plan that we saw presented to us, and I think we'll have some more conversation about that. But start looking at how those funds will be available for that. So the next workshop, of course, we won't have one this month, so we'll come in April and bring back to you some more information about the budget. Also at that workshop, I want to bring to you a presentation about the Affordable Healthcare Act and what that impact is going to be on the school district and our health insurance. Just to give you a little snippet, there's going to be an impact as far as how we pay the federal government for the healthcare that's provided to individuals. If you don't have healthcare provided by, like, from your employer, you can buy in a pool, or there's maybe another term for it, through the federal government, because the state has elected not to join, so it's all going to go to the federal government. But essentially, employers are already, are paying for that because there will be a fee paid associated with that to pay the federal government for that health insurance program. There's a lot of nuances involved in the Affordable Healthcare Plan, including substitutes. Substitutes are potentially eligible now for health insurance based on this new Affordable Healthcare Act that passed through Congress. So a lot of nuances, a lot of things we've got to discuss and make sure you're aware of, that will drive up some of our rates on our health insurance, because they will become effective next January.
So where does the word affordable come from?
Everyone will be able to buy insurance.
Not in, not in three and four thousand dollars a month, if they don't have it now.
Yeah, there you go.
It'd be a four day.
But we just need to be concerned with some
Little verb conjugation going on there.
Some of the issues that it doesn't bring along, so we're prepared for it. The other thing we'll bring forth to you is staffing and how the staffing meetings have played out this year and the staffing plans in general, to look at that and review. And then I know Ms. Powers has asked for us to review sinkholes, what we do to help identify and eliminate, and then also our insurance coverage and our sinkholes. So there seems to be one more item that I'm thinking of that
At the workshop?
Yeah.
Renaissance.
Renaissance, we'll discuss those options as well with you for the Renaissance Center, kind of continuation of the conversation we had at the last workshop, so. Any other things you'd want to talk about?
Just clarification, you said substitutes would be entitled. How does that?
There's language in there, and I don't know all the details. That's why we're waiting to gather some information. We're continuing to listen and learn, and we'll come back in the April workshop. But based on, like, long-term subs, and don't hold me to this, but based on what I understand, they'll become eligible almost during a waiting period of time, but they'll become eligible. But a temporary sub, one to two days, it's going to look back at a previous period of time, and if they work so many hours during that previous period of time, they would be eligible for healthcare under our plan. So there's all kinds of rules to, and substitutes are, you know, one of those things that no one knew about up until about a month ago, when that became that surface up to the top with some information that came down from Washington.
And is, would they be entitled to it then at the same rate then as our current employees?
Those are decisions that we're going to have to make on how that's offered to them.
I think it's going to be prorated on the number of hours that they actually do work for us.
Okay.
According to my insurance committee meeting that I went to.
So there will be an impact.
Yes.
There will be an impact. Was that all for the workshop?
Technology plan. At the April board meeting, we are preparing to bring the technology plan back to for, for partial or for approval. And what we've asked Dr. Gess to do is to put a dollar amount for the plan for next year, the pilot program next year, where we would expand it on seventh graders, and then a pilot program at either elementary or high school. So we will ask for your approval at that, at the next board meeting, based on what we've discussed for next year. So just to let you know, we'll put some dollar amounts with that. Will we project it, activate? Yes, we'll present the whole thing again, but when we started Citrus Springs pilot program for last year, our teachers had iPads in their hands by April, by the end of April. So we want to bring that back and have a board discussion on it.
So there'll be requests for purchase orders. If the plan were approved, then we would go into request for purchase orders at the same meeting, so we can certainly put those devices in the hands of the teachers in April.
Okay, and then we'd have a projection for next year.
Well, that was already in the plan.
Yeah. Speaking to your microphone, I fear.
We will, we will show you, we'll show you the impact onto the capital budget and how we think that it'll flow through. So you'll see next year's plan and the preemptive following here and what the impacts are.
With the projections, monetary projections of how much money we'll have to implement and
That's correct, yeah. We'll forecast that out, based on what we know.
And what is the, what is the deadline? The 50% of everything we do has got to be technology-driven?
15, 16, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
And that would be the fall of 15, in essence, that we would have to start.
All right, and the session has started, and we're, they're in committee meetings or whatever, so we are continuing to monitor a lot of that information that's coming out in some of the bills. And I know Ms. Hemel and I are taking a trip up there to speak to some individuals to see if we can seek any aid for Citrus County, so.
Here, here.
Technology or any kind of aid?
Any kind of aid.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Okay, school operations. Mr. Clutter?
I'm actually going to turn it over to Dr. Gess, because Dr. Gess is making a recommendation to the board on our adoptions and for English Language Arts and Mathematics at the K-12 level.
Mr. Clutter, before you leave, I want to thank you for this.
You are welcome, ma'am. Glad you got it.
We just need the senior award night. There's just a scratch over high school, but there wasn't Citrus or
Yeah, they're all there.
They're all in the same line, ma'am.
Oh, on the same line.
They're on the same line, yes. Carried that all the way.
Oh, okay.
What is community mobilization training?
Community mobilization training. Lyndy, do you know that?
Has to do with Ranjublonskis, the
Yes.
I'm still in from there.
Yes, it was the one, actually, it's a repeat. They did one last year from the, gosh, Ranjublonskis' group from the community. They come in and work with our students, parents, and actual teachers.
That's from the drug-free
The drug-free
Thank you, ma'am.
Satellite, some sort of training we were all going to get through, but it's not.
It's a training they offer out to our instructional staff.
Okay, super, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Gess.
All right, give me just a second here.
All right, you can have two.
I always appreciate it when Mr. Clutter warms up the crowd for me. Basically, I don't have a big formal presentation for you this afternoon. I know you're breathing. Well, let me backtrack here.
We know it's there.
Let me just share that I'm representing
Council Pearson.
The K through five reading and math adoption that we, that I facilitated with our curriculum folks this school year. That schedule, as you may know, is determined by the state of Florida. So this year was, 1213 was the year to consider the adoption for 1314. Well, let me, before I get to that, I don't have, like I say, a real organized presentation. I just want to kind of hit some highlights. We had a very distinguished group of experienced teachers and subject matter experts come together at various times to kind of facilitate this whole adoption process. They were led ably by Cheryl King and by Brady Hannett and by Carol Maynor and by a few others involved, including myself. I was just very, very, very impressed with this group and their experience and the discussion they went through in that evaluation process. I can say that, without going into all the detail of both instruments, each subject area group, they developed very in-depth, and I thought very comprehensive rubrics by which to evaluate the materials. And of course, Common Core is high on the list, technology, the digital content, as we move in that direction, high on the list. Does it meet the requirements that we have for those particular curriculum areas? Just a lot of detail, ancillary materials, you know, higher-level interventions, a lot of different considerations. And so the group heard presentations, I'll show you briefly the schedule. They heard presentations from the publishers. They went through a process of developing their individual rubrics for each subject area, and then they came together and just had made a consensus decision based on their evaluation in those rubrics. And so I can tell you that for reading, they chose Pearson Education, published by Scott Forsman. It's called Pearson Reading Street, Florida Common Core Edition. For the math, they chose Houghton, Mifflin, Harcourt. Go Math is really a continuation of curriculum that we've been using for the previous few years.
So is it very similar to the books we already had?
It's similar, but it more fully addresses the Common Core. And so one of the benefits for us in continuing that math publisher, that math series, is that we could use a lot of the existing pieces like manipulatives and supplemental things that were, that we'd already paid for. We didn't have to replace those. And so by going that approach, making sure it addressed Common Core and had the digital piece that we needed, we actually were being able to purchase that for $30 per student compared to minimum like $62 per student, or any other, the next alternative out. So saved us some money, and I think it's going to be, you know, very functional, very useful. One of the challenges we had as this year, you know, for this, this coming year's adoption, you know, unusually, we're being asked to look at two different subject areas, something we don't typically do, and that, again, driven by Common Core requirements. And so had we had to look at two subject areas that where we would have had to pull the, pay the full, full-blown price, unlikely we could have afforded that without some additional means. So this works out good. So those are the recommendations that are being made. I don't know if you have any questions. I do have some curriculum folks here. Thank you, all, Lyndy and Cheryl and Brady, for being here. Do you have any questions for us about the process or about the content?
Ms. Deutschman?
Well, I'm just, I'm just sort of, I, I think Pearson should be allowed to bid on any of this work, because they're creating their own work. It's a, it's a windfall for them. And the fact that we have to buy these books and we have math books two years ago, I mean, these companies are making a fortune off of this Common Core thing, and who's pushing it? Who's pushing it?
I'm not.
People like Pearson are pushing it. And so the feathers are up nest and gives them their own money, so I really hate to see their name on anything that we're spending money on. I just want to have to say that.
I can say that, you know, having seen the process, I feel very good about the material we're going to be, you know, using with our students. We feel like it's first-class, on the state of the art, top-notch. Seriously. It's, and one of the things we've discovered with all the publishers, including Pearson and Houghton, the ones that we chose this round, the quality of their digital content is really increasing significantly.
Oh, yes, and who is the one who's pushing all the computer-based technology?
Understand.
Oh, oh, would it be Pearson?
I'm not disagreeing with you, ma'am. So that's our recommendation, and we're asking for your approval this afternoon.
Dr. Gess, I know we've had, my wife, my wife, my daughters used Go Math, and my son did while we still had as part of the adoption. So this adoption's clearly going to fall into that 50%, where that while this doesn't mandate the 50% usage, it will fall into a period where theoretically, students would have a device that would follow to have to use that or could use that. My experience with Think Central has been pretty positive in lots of its manipulatives and use of it, and it's really good when you forget a book at home, from school too. But it could be better, and particularly in the iOS area, it could be better, because much of, I think, the Florida Go Math is flash-based, or has been flash-based, at least in its demo, in its demoing of some of those pieces, because I can't get it to run on an iOS or a Chrome book. So I guess my question is, is have they talked about an app? Have they talked about how they're addressing that? Because as we know, and I've just seen some recent statistics in Florida, that show that the iOS devices are off the chart as far as district purchase, so I know we're not alone in this.
That's a good, very good question. What we've seen from all the publishers
And I know what happens, I know what it means when their lips are moving.
Yeah, you're right. Exactly. Yeah, well, that's all, you know, it's all, it's going to be wonderful when it gets here. But, but I can tell you, from all the publishers we evaluated, none of them are 100% compatible with anything, it seems like. And so, for example, the Houghton offering, they're very strong, a lot of their web-based things are electronic textbook, but a lot of their pieces are flash-based, same with Pearson, to be honest with you, and so
And cloud-based, which means if they don't have an internet, and we found that even with Citrus Springs, they don't have an internet, but they don't have a book.
So I actually had a meeting with, you know, a computer vendor today, and we were talking about standards, and I shared, as a member of the Florida Association of District and Construction Materials Administrators, FATMA, last year, we had a face-to-face meeting with vice presidents from all of the big three, like McGraw-Hill and Pearson and Hope Mifflin, all the big players. And these people were directly responsible for their digital development. And basically, the message we gave to them, I, I was saying, listen, we got to have some standards here. You know, you have to come to some agreement, so we're not, you know, just kind of hoping and wishing and shooting in the dark when it comes to, you know, we're moving toward digital content. It needs to be compatible with the devices that we, we have available. So I think that's, everyone says that's, you know, we're kind of moving in that direction. I, I have a feeling, and certainly year by year, it is going to improve. I was scanning around very quickly, and I, I thought I had it somewhere, like on a web, webpage kind of pulled up, to talk about some of the digital pieces of that particular curriculum offering. One of the things I, I do see, not changing the topic, but Common Core is, of course, a big factor, and this is related to the Pearson curriculum and some of the elements of Common Core, you know, that it addresses.
The reading series, with reading, and I'm assuming it's the same situation at the elementary level, that with Common Core, reading is really ELA.
Right.
And as ELA, it's combined with writing, reading is all one and the same. Does this reading series address that?
I'm going to probably defer to some of my some-people
I see some nodding, but I
From everything I saw in the process, I would say yes, but I think others could address it more.
Yes.
and wishing and shooting in the dark when it comes to, you know, we're moving toward digital content, it needs to be compatible with the devices that we, um, we have available. So, I think that's, everyone says that's, you know, we're kind of moving in that direction. I, I have a feeling, and certainly year by year, it is going to improve. I was scanning around very quickly, um, and I, I thought I had it somewhere, um, like on a web, webpage kind of pulled up, to talk about, um, some of the digital pieces of that particular, um, curriculum offering. One of the things I, I do see, not changing the topic, but, um, Common Core is of course a big factor, and, um, this is related to the Pearson curriculum and some of the elements, um, of Common Core, you know, that it addresses.
The reading series, with reading, and I'm assuming it's the same situation at the elementary level, that with Common Core, reading is really ELA.
Right.
And, and as ELA, it's combined with writing, reading is all one in the same, does this reading series address that?
I'm going to probably defer to some of my some tech people.
I see some nodding, but I-
From everything I saw in the process, I would say yes, but I think, um, others could address it more.
Yes. Do you want me to go?
Come on Cheryl, come on, come on down.
Um, yes, the series does address that, there is, the writing is interwoven in with the reading. So, you'll see there will be more writing, they have, um, they have a book that they can journal in, you know, as they're going through, so yes, we look for that, that was a piece as we were going through the adoption, to make sure that that was there.
So again, my big question and worry-
Okay.
-is that with the Common Core standards and the PARC standards-
Right.
-we're showing that our fourth graders are going to have to write, type, a page in one setting.
Right.
Does this series work towards that? And is there manipulatives for that? Because, like, you know, I, I'm, I know I've talked to some principals and, and visited some classrooms even since our last, um, presentation on writing, and one of the interesting pieces is how much they do of the writing as a skill, but when I talk about, okay, but now how is that going to address that fourth grade, one pa, you know, one page at a sitting, what are we doing to get there? Because we're, every day, we're doing writing-
Right, yeah.
-but we're not necessarily doing that as typing, and yet, all of that will be done through the typing. So I guess, does the series address any of that?
The series, um, basically, we're going to have the component when we have, um, the things that the children will need to be able to do that, and we had talked about keyboarding, that had come up, right? So, you know, one of the things that we're going to have to look at is, they are going to have to be able to be, you know, typing at that point, but at this point, what this series is doing is it allows them to write in response, and that's one of the big things that comes in Common Core. They have to write in response, they go into the text, they pull the details out of the text, and they write into in response. So, you know, we have, FCAP writes is going to be here this year and next year. So, I'm not really sure as far as, are they going to be, you know, are they going to be prepping to be ready for this test when we get everything out? I think so. You know, we're going to have to look at what they're wanting and what they're asking for, and to provide those things.
See, the one thing that, that I see as I go around and I, I, I see the students and see how we've been teaching writing is-
Right.
-we're, we're teaching that journaling and those, those aspects-
Yes.
-which it's, it's wonderful.
Okay.
But it, it is the thought from here to here, which is a different thinking than from here to here.
Through the keyboard.
And, and so it's almost like we're teaching them this, and then are we going to be thinking they're going to do this? Because really, it's a different thought process.
Okay, but one of the things, you know that-
[laughing]
Let me speak. But you do know that they go into tech, and they do type up reports and those kind of things, so it's not that they're never exposed to that kind of writing on the computer.
But unfortunately, the test that they're going to have to take, that's going to measure everything from the teacher to the students passing to everything, involves them reading a, a text undigitally-
That's correct.
-and using the keyboard to actually then provide that answer.
Uh huh.
And that's very different-
And a whole page, is what you're saying.
Well, no, that's even very different than the book that we're providing, which is a book and a journal.
Also, there is another, the technology, the technology component that is connected to this program, which, um, we are just getting into the weeds of what everything this program has to offer. We had, um, one meeting already with the, the company to start with giving professional help and, um, going in depth. However, there is a writing component that is technology-based, where students will type, write in response to something, and the computer is intuitive, the program's intuitive enough to come back and say, next year you're supposed to be writing in a narrative response, have you established a, have you established a concern?
Right.
So, I think that piece of it, as it, as it's included in the program, will be very powerful, as we do exactly what you're asking, the students will be, have to respond on that computer and get feedback on whether they're doing, they can also then revise the writing, and it'll get scored again.
Because it is a very different way of writing through a pen and pencil than it is through typing, and, and even the editing and, and the correction. I, I know, uh, Mr. Simon, this week, after learning some information, said, "I curse you." And, um, and he teasingly was saying, because it's the concern that I continue to be worried about, well, yes, I'm a technology enthusiast, I, I've been also just worried as to where we've got to get our kids. And unfortunately, I agree with, with Ms. Deutman so much, we have, a, all of this is being driven by assessment.
Right.
Um, not necessarily of the, just simply the, the needs they need to know, which I think we all agree with, that we also want them to go in that direction, but we're, we're tied to this assessment that is, everything is going to be based on, including our, unfortunately, our teacher salaries.
Correct. I just, I think those digital pieces will be there for us, be very powerful. I know, as you do, as you, as you go into the school, our students are on computer scale, they are developing presentations, they are conducting research, they are creating, writing and doing their presentations. So I think that piece, along with the piece of the skill we have to teach them, how to respond to that, you know, to the instruction necessary, to be able to respond to the writing the way it needs to, and transferring that into a typed response. Will grow through the program, and I think the program will support that.
And I appreciate that, and I, and I hope that, the, the concern though, that I would still say as you look around, that I can't help but pay attention to, is many of those pieces that we see archival evidence of with the students, are ones that are based in very small, short responses of type.
Correct.
They are not endurance writing, they are not long responded writings, unless they are something that maybe was a project that's over a long period of time. And so that's, to me, a very different thinking and thought process than really what is being, what we're having to move to.
So you're saying they're not going to be able to maintain their thought, uh, one, or develop?
Well, I think right now, when we're asking them to, to do that, they have a skill to type a sentence or two of researching something, but that's different than sitting and writing forty-five minutes and a page worth of, of text.
Completely different.
And, and that's what concerns me of how we're going to get there, and, uh-oh, here it comes.
I won't publicly make that comment.
You also respond to, uh, that's in the, the students' journal, journal, journaling is much different from writing an essay supplement.
Correct. So, first of all, I want to give you a frame of what the PARC assessment will be, that, that you have referenced, Mr. Kennedy, there will be two, and, and again, this is the first release last week of the state of Florida's understanding of the approach we as a state are taking to the PARC assessment. There will be two tests administered at this point in time to students in grades three through eleven. The first one will be a performance-based assessment at about the same time when we do writing, so that will be in February of the school year for all students, English, Language Arts grades three through eleven, and then at the end of the year, there will be the end-of-year assessments and end-of-course assessments on PARC. The first performance-based assessment, you're correct, Mr. Kennedy, will be short response. So a student will read a passage and be asked to respond in short typed format. The decision to do the traditional fourth grade narrative expository, eighth grade, tenth grade writing, has not yet been finalized as to whether that will be typed or whether that will be handwritten. Again, that, we're still in the formative stages of that decision, but it appears as though there's potential that it could be typed as well, as you said. That brings up the point that you make, it's not just the student's ability to construct the ideas for the writing, it's the whole concept of using the technology, Dr. Gettys and I, we have talked about that in these early stages, so in terms of the type of technology, how do we prepare students? Because not only is it the elements of a Word document piece, whether you're indenting, spacing, uh, there'll be no spell check, but how does that look on a desktop versus an, a notepad versus a tablet iPad? So those are all different devices that we will be deliberate in working on, because it cannot be incidental or accidental, it cannot be the assumption that we send students to a computer lab and that they'll be ready for this type of response. Journaling, and again, journaling is probably a misnomer, mispowers with regard to a consumable of the past, it was a consumable document that students used in order to record, respond, extract reactions to writings, whether they be analytical, or narrative response, or expository response, or other response. So, the journaling phrase really refers to the student's response with words or language to either text, print, literature, fiction, nonfiction. So, and again, I know that we have our work cut out for us to do at all levels in preparing because it's, it's multiple. It is, how do we prepare students for devices upon which they will respond to these? It's the thinking, the writing, and the technology. Will we have enough technology to do the things that we need to do as we ready for and implement this? Our issue is Citrus County, as well as the rest of the state, our hope is that we plan carefully, prudently, and purposefully in getting ready for it. And again, I think that as soon as we get answers, uh, we'll be able to plan more appropriately.
And, and the trouble is, is, and I think our district is doing that, and I, I have such respect for each of you as, as you're trying to do that, and, and Lyndi, you make a great case of the, the pieces that we're trying to bring in, um, Patrick and Dr. G and, and Mark. It's just that what we know is, we're asked to doing this overnight, and many of these shifts take years. I mean, I know in my case, I've got a son that's gone through the traditional writing format, he's going to hit theoretically, the PARC in tenth grade, and we don't really know how that's going to look differently than we've taught him, raised him one direction. Um, now, my son's probably going to be fine, he's got an ELI teacher at home, but we don't have that with all of our students. And, we, you know, we're, we're trying to constantly look at crystal ball and do this. I do believe without a question, what I hear from teachers, what I hear from administrators, and what I'm hearing from you alls, you've also got to have some tools to accomplish that. Otherwise, you can't be getting us down the road.
And those tools have components related, it's not just a device, it's a device with related components. And the last thing I want to make sure we all know and remember is that, no matter what happens, and I believe our commissioner even stated that this past week, there will always be paper pencil versions for students either who do not have the capability or need the accommodations, or for one reason or another cannot respond to a, a technology device. So that will always be in place.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
I wanted to make one statement, I, I was typing something yesterday, I'm doing a little essay of sorts, and I noticed that I hit like, I think a comma when I was supposed to hit an apostrophe, only because I was there on the keyboard, and I was thinking, my gosh, when the students do this, I caught it when I proofread it, and I thought, that would, you could be taking off some points or that, and that was just a mechanical thing, I certainly know the difference between a comma and apostrophe.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do.
I think this empowers you all, our community, where I think I've had some corrections that I appreciate on your behalf, so, I think part of that response is, what you're referring to is, sometimes there is, there is an unconscious error because of lack of knowledge, or there may be an error because of finger slip, and, and so how is, the, the question you have is legitimate, that we have already phrased, how, how do you take into account those two different, the two very different errors? One out of omission of knowledge, the other out of slight a finger. So I think, you know, those are things that we, we will be talking about as we move forward.
And, and has there ever been a determination of whether this will be human scored, automated scored, or a combination?
That, that was in the last webinar, and I believe the response was, uh, at this point, it's a combination, but it's leaning towards more automation.
That, that was my understanding, thank you, Mr. Simon.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. All right, Dr. Gettys, do we have a motion on this?
I'll move approval of K five English, Language Arts, and Math instructional materials. Did I do that right?
You did. Do we have a second?
As recommended by the instructional materials adoptions team there.
That's right.
I missed something.
And do we have a second?
She's not. Because she's not going to do it.
I'll second it, goodness gracious, Brian. There you go.
We have time, of course not.
We, do we still have plenty of time, if you're pressed?
I do want to ask a question on that, because the point that Pat made, you're always recusing your, because your brother works, uh, for companies that build homes in school, so you always-
I do, I do.
That's a question, if someone, um, has a plan and pushing a particular plan, then that person, uh-
It's immoral.
Is it ethical? The ethical part?
How, how can one do that? How, how can one?
I think Christopher Kennedy, didn't you send this to her?
Which one? I'm sorry, you should know better than this.
Yes, yes he did, yes he did.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
We have professors in college who teach a certain course, and they write a book, and you'd have to buy their book to take the course, but it, it seems a lot, what were the other choices here? Besides the K three five eight-
Oh, Pearson had a whole selection.
Well, we, yeah, well, for the reading, it was, uh, McGraw-Hill, um, Harcourt, Hope Mifflin Harcourt, HMH, and then Pearson were the big three. There were some other publishers like Mondo and some other publishers that are lesser known, um, maybe one or two in that mix. Um, but, those were the three big players.
And why was a choice made, knowing that, uh, they were behind the Common Core, why was a choice made to go with Pearson?
The choice was made based on that criteria established in that rubric, so, who was less of a question than what was the content, uh, how does it address that criteria that they identified as important? So, to be honest, publisher wasn't a piece of that, it was the content.
Do you all want to comment on that too?
I was present for that, um, Cheryl.
Well, I'm sure, it was, we used the rubric. Um, the roof, the same rubric was used for each of the series, you know, that we went through. Um, and they were close, two of them were very close, um, but as they went through, the rubric was the driving force. The rubric that came out was the highest amount of, the highest number, just the one that was adopted, that they chose.
Just to remind the board, we've been working on a process that was started back in two thousand and eight called Rules of the Road, and that Rules of the Road, be more than happy to share that with you, I do have a link to a website that has that information. But the rubric that Cheryl had mentioned is our driving force, that is the piece that puts everybody on that level playing field. It is one rubric that is not taken from the state, it's not copied each year, that group develops that rubric of what they want to see in that program. So the work that Cheryl and Carol and Dr. Gettys have done and, and Brady, really actually sets the stage. At the first meeting that they have, they start looking at the Common Core, they start looking at data, they start looking at all of that information, and then there then, it drives that pieces to that rubric. So that rubric is very important, and Dr. Gettys had actually showed that to you at the forefront. So it provides a level playing field and brings no, uh, nothing into that process that's going to, um, provide prejudices on that.
Who makes the rubric?
That group, that group actually sits down, and they actually talk about every specific component to that rubric.
So it's not passed on to you from above?
No.
No, no.
It's, it's different each year, ma'am. So, uh, mathematics had a different rubric for the K through five, the one that we did years ago for social studies, again, unique, and that's important, because that's the importance of that group that gets together, has those conversations about what's important to them.
And in reading, we used Harcourt, correct?
That is the one-
It was the previous one?
Yes.
Because it would seem like that group, like with Go Math, you would think that those that have been using a certain series probably would lend itself to certain things in the, so I wasn't overly surprised with that concept that you go, that Go Math kind of came out, because you'd think, well, they're using those strategies, those manipulatives, and it would lend itself to that instruction. But in this case, it was interesting, Harcourt didn't win out.
I, I've seen many incumbent programs actually turn over and go to a different one. And so again, it's, it's really the changes that they, that they've made in that program that may be referred by their group.
And, and ethical consideration's not ours, we can't have a conscientious- We can't have a conscientious objection about a vendor and say, we don't want you even though it's the best material. This is a problem for our state. This should be a problem at the state level, that you cannot be the testing agency as well as the supplier, remediation, and teacher evaluation tool.
One thing that I do want to share with the board is that the state still puts their approved list out. That is the process that they go through that we actually run simultaneously with. They have not put out an approved list yet, and here it is in March. We still don't have the approved list from the state of Florida.
Now, weren't they going to even make it open-ended because of all the digital content, that there would be no approved list anymore because it would be too restrictive?
That's in discussion right now with the statute, with the legislation. But as of right now, we're still following their, Dr. Gettys is going to have to actually report to the state in a couple of weeks what our decision is, so that way the Florida School Depository can then start inventorying. But we've got to get going. We've got to start training our teachers. Typically, teachers want those, and rightly so, they want those materials prior to the summertime so that they can get started on that program.
They can work for free.
Amen.
So you totally feel that you made the rubric, that this series fits the rubric, that it's an objective choice on your part?
Um, yes, ma'am. They went through and they pulled out, the first thing we did when we made our rubric was, we went through and we pulled out all the pieces that we felt were really important and had to be into in the series. And so, using clickers, we went through and we were able to, through Excel, and pull out all those different areas that we felt like needed to be there. And then we went down and went through things that, you know, kind of doubled. And we came up with what was a really good rubric that represented what we needed in a reading series. And I think Mike had picked that up earlier for you to see.
I can say I'm newer to the process. I was impressed at the quality of their effort in producing that rubric. I think it was objective. I think it was solid. These are subject matter experts that work with kids on a daily basis. They're the most expert people we have in curriculum in our district, if you could be told. They live with it daily. So I have a lot of confidence in that process and a lot of confidence in making this recommendation to you that we all are doing the best we can.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Have any further questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate you.
You love me.
Oh, okay. You are used to us. She is. You know where we come from. Ms. Dorich.
Yes, I'm here to request that you approve the request to advertise for a public hearing on May 14, 2013 School Board Meeting to approve the Student Code of Conduct. So attached to the request item was a copy of the final copy of the code, and it does include the discussion that we had at the last workshop reflected on pages 21 and 22 for the use of the Internet, cell phones, and electronic devices. So those last minute changes that we had, Wes has tweaked that, and that is reflected here.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
I just approve the request to advertise a public hearing on May 14, 2013 School Board Meeting to approve the Student Code of Conduct.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Wow.
I couldn't believe you for the work on this.
I couldn't believe we didn't have any questions or comments, Ms. Dorich.
Neither.
Yeah, they are. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm going to pause the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Dorichman.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Dorichman, a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Mr. Bradshaw, Attorney Legal Matters.
We all have been down here for a Duke Energy lawsuit, so I'm assuming that you want an update on what's going on. Outside of a flurry of paperwork that's flying back and forth between law firms in regards to this, on Thursday of this week, there are a number of hearings that are going to take place, starting at about 1:30, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, and will probably run until 5:00. Probably the most significant one affecting the school district is our motion to intervene as a party to that lawsuit. There's been the motion to intervene, there was response, it was 30 pages long, there's, you know, there's, everything's 25 or 30 pages long, case law and everything. So it makes for some very interesting reading. But that, on Thursday, there's a number of hearing, of motions that are going to be heard. They appointed T. Michael Johnson, who is a recently retired circuit court judge from Lake County, to hear the matter, probably to help expedite it because his calendar is probably more clear than other judges, at least at this time. I do not anticipate him giving a ruling on that day. I would be very surprised if he did. I would imagine that he will take it under advisement and issue a written ruling at some point in time, not very far out in the future. But I've never practiced in front of him. He may be a gentleman that says, you know, this is what I think right now, I'll be done with it, or he may take it under advisement and then issue a written ruling. So as of Thursday, or when we receive that order, we'll know whether or not we are a party or not a party. If we're not a party, we're not a party, and we're out. And if we are a party, we're in. So that's basically the, outside of the motions to strike affirmative defenses, motions to strike counterclaims, motions to, you know, all the legal wrangling that's going on, that's the one that's most affecting the school district, and that's going to happen on Thursday, and I will be there, so.
All righty.
Right. Outside of that, I don't have anything further.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Appreciate it.
Mr. Bradshaw, while you're there, can you bring us up to date on our BAV appointment? I know we got an email from you about the process.
I know.
Just on board.
Right.
We have to appoint a new, we just selected a new citizen representative.
Right.
Today was CJ Dixon's last meeting, and the next organization meeting is going to be in July.
Yeah, I think I'll put it there, what we should do is, we'll post the application on our webpage, post the application on the Board of County Commissioners webpage, and try to coordinate with them an ending date for applications to be submitted. And then, once all the applications are submitted, then put that as an agenda item here in front of the board, and then let y'all discuss the applications and make a recommendation.
Then we need to start putting that process in motion right now because if we're going to have to select this person out of June meeting for a July BAV meeting, so.
I'll get with whoever needs to be gotten with as far as posting the application on our webpage and getting with the Board of County Commissioners as far as putting that up on their webpage and getting a deadline date. Yes, ma'am.
All righty. All board members, committee reports, and other business that needs to come before the school board. Mr. Mullin, do you have anything for us?
No, ma'am.
All righty. Ms. Powers?
Yes, just some reminders about teacher and student art, sights and sounds is taking place right now in the Crystal River Mall where students all of them play their art.
Yes, it is.
It's fun to look at.
Awesome.
March the 5th through the 26th of March is taking place right now. We have art, teacher art, that is also taking place right now at the courthouse, and it's March the 7th through April the 12th.
Oh, the old courthouse?
The old courthouse, March the 7th through April the 12th, and the teachers' display there are.
They're having a reception one of those nights, right?
Yes.
It's a reception.
Let me see. I think I have conflict. Yeah, I think it's, well, let me look at that.
Thursday, I think.
It is. It's Thursday.
I think it's next Thursday night.
We won't be here, we're going to be in town and house here. That's right. I remember I had a conflict, I didn't remember what it was.
A second ago, that day.
I think it was, it's, I think it is Thursday the 21st.
At what time?
It lasts a little while, so.
Okay, anybody that goes, explain to them.
Yes.
That we're not here.
The senior art show, April the 10th through 12th, at the Central Board of College, April 9th, and that is a school board meeting time, but the reception will be starting at 6:00, so it'll be the last about 9:00. So any time after the school board meeting, if you want to go over, be there, so. At Central Board of College, in the big room that's in the last.
Mm-hmm.
And we're having a, I'll just, ahead of time, Jeff, we're having the Chronicle Box is up again this year for the art show, and all the schools doing their painting, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Yesterday, I took Ms. Digna Alvarez and accompanied her out to the Marine Science Station for her to have a chance to.
She loved it, didn't she?
She just loved it. She is, it is very encouraging. It looks like that the Senator has some interest to come out and experience that. And so, we're working to arrange that, you know, he's very environmentally interested, and this just kind of really fits into all of that. So that was a great experience. I got to show her the new Berry Canon, you know, the revised Berry Canon Museum that you all, it's such a beautiful building. You all should be so proud of putting that. So that was a wonderful day. And, you know, I got kind of on my, as I go around and I talk to parents and teachers, what I have heard a lot lately, well, I know everybody, a lot of people will say Skyward is a, maybe considered sometimes a challenging name, I just have heard such positive things about it lately.
Good.
Parents saying how it has empowered them, how they, their kids aren't hiding from their grades.
I guess not.
They can't wait until, you know, the midterm, waiting to the midterm, even the students in my youth group, they'll be like, yeah, I used to be able to wait till the midterm before I had to worry about my grades. Now, now my parents get updates on their phones. And so it actually, you know, because you can set it up where it gives you an update or, you know, daily or weekly or.
Every Saturday.
Every Saturday. There's another one of these. So, and teachers, while there's been challenges getting through, because it's a whole new system, I just hear very encouraging things about how that's going. So I just appreciate that, and I know that's been a lot of work, but I think they really value it. On Thursday, Mr. Simon, with the blessing of Ms. Hemel, or maybe the assigning from Ms. Hemel, has, is going to accompany me, and we're going to be speaking before the Citrus Economic Development Committee to talk about CTE and how the graduation requirements.
What time is that on Thursday?
That is at 8:30 in the morning. And one of the things that the EDC and workforce has been talking about is these job-ready skills gap. And I think we had some information that showed very much the wonderful work our schools and our students are doing. And we wanted to talk about that, and we wanted to talk to them about the challenges that the state has put us under, where they have made it very difficult, sometimes impossible for the students, the very students that need vocational options to get them because of the requirements of the read and remediation and all of the things that we talked about. So we're going to talk to them about that and have that be aware. At this point, I am also, next Wednesday, because I'm maybe in town still, attending the Elementary Pupil Progression Plan.
Are you going to do that? Good. I was going to ask you that.
Yeah.
I think that's March 20th, right?
Eh, probably.
At 1:15.
I just have it down.
According to Mr.
So if there's anything that you want me to share at that meeting or take to, if you want to, you know, send this for me, and she'll get it to me.
Okay, great.
But I didn't want to throw that out to you.
I'm so glad you're doing that.
No, my pleasure. And then, there's some interesting legislation that, as you go up there, that, I don't know how much of it is even fully gotten into bill form right now, but there is a House Bill 7001. I believe there's a concurrent Senate Bill that's done by Senator Mumford, which is to correct some of the educational issues that we know have been plaguing our districts. And in addition to that, the Subcommittee for K-12 Education has also been working to come up with another bill, that's a committee bill that would address some of the pieces that 7001 does, has not addressed. Some of these are, and I think the things that are interesting are the graduation requirements of having basically three graduation options. And I wanted to say one thing at the outset. The trouble is, they're trying to fix a problem they created. So, and I have continued to remind that because we wouldn't even be having to have this conversation.
If you hadn't, it alone.
That's right. So, but that aside, the fact that we haven't.
I'm admitted.
No.
I don't want to undo it.
So in there blazing forward, but now blatant, you know, corrections, some of the things I talked about is three different diplomas. One that's basically a type of career track, a career and technical, tech ed type track, which is almost as rigorous in requirements as your college readiness. And then, they're calling it an industrial, I believe, track, which I might think, simply say, is a standard high school diploma. One of the things that they are talking about is that rather than the EOC that count towards 100% of graduation, it would become 30%. I think, Ms. Vicki, you might have been in that town where some of this conversation was going in. So that's encouraging. We're hoping that that continues, or that dialogue, and hopefully that that gets into the bill form. They have drafted the language, it has not been submitted into a bill yet, but the committee is certainly moving in that direction. The other thing, and this is the other, it would take out the 1/6 funding penalty for the EOC. That's encouraging. There's some other pieces of this, but I will, as I get more information, I will send it on to you, but I would, as you're up there, you know, I know parent trigger, I know some of these other ones are a focus for, you know, for groups, and I understand that, but this is also some of the things that really affects us. We don't have that schools. So, I mean, I'm concerned about this type of thing, so. That's really it, but I wanted to just lift that up to you all.
Thank you. Ms. Dorichman.
I'm going to the High School People's Progression Plan meeting this week.
Right.
And so I did forward that email to Gail because I wanted her to be aware that some of that included language for students who are currently in high school that came in under a different graduation requirements, that may change. So we have to be, I guess, flexible and.
We do have to be flexible.
Right, to be continued at the end of. Yeah, and what I'm offended by, I think when I read articles about comments from legislators around the state, is that they keep calling this dumbing down of the curriculum. I'm like, really? First of all, we haven't gotten to the point where it's all the way at the top level yet. Thank God, you know, they're going to try and make it more reasonable for a lot of students. But to call it that dumbing down is, to me, highly offensive. So, but that's been part of the discussion up there, and of course, you know, Jeb Bush Foundation is completely and totally opposed to any of this.
Oh, yeah.
Too bad, I suppose. Other than I've been working a lot, so anyone could do anything else.
Okay, all righty. I have a reminder to save the date here. Let me see if I can find it on my little, oops, that's not right.
While Miss Bryan's looking that up, I'm leaving.
Oh, yes, you're going to town. Tell them to be sensible and smart.
Okay.
But originally.
There is no dumbing down.
There's no dumbing down.
Okay. Light Light South is sponsoring the Citrus County School Board Blood Drive this Thursday right here. It's going to be from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and they're going to give a free, to all blood donors, a free Subway coupon for the six-inch sub, and a free 30-minute massage compliments of everyone's Massage Therapy Services LLC and Inverness. Thank you for helping save lives in Citrus County. I don't know. I'm just reading what it said.
Drive safe, Ms. Hemel.
Bye. Okay.
Say hello to Michael for us.
Absolutely. That's all that I have. I'm so glad to be on the mend. I guess Ms. Hemel doesn't have anything, does she? All right.
We have a time certain.
We have a time certain. I've got to read something. I've got to read something. This is the Chair Statement Concerning Public Speakers. Each listed speaker will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue at hand and refrain from using obscenities, vulgarities, or other breaches of respect, and refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of the peace. We ask that you model the following character traits: cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The School Board will not discuss or take official action on any presentation. Any persons present who wish to speak must fill out a green card, which are located in the back of the room. And the Chair calls the first speaker, Jeffrey Feldman.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
My name is Jeffrey Feldman. I taught in Citrus County several years ago. My first supervisor was Mr. Mark Quata. I taught at Inverness Middle School, moved away, came back, and taught a few years in First River High School. Prior to going to First River High School, 2006, there was something on my application that was sort of left out or overlooked on my part, and that was something about, did you ever have a record expunged? I explained to Mrs. Royale on June 2006 of the situation that I went to teach at Crystal River High School. Nothing ever, after that, was said. The new requirements now, I had to update my application. Once again, I sort of overlooked it, and they called me in and said, you know, you overlooked it, and according to the rules, I found out, you have to wait one year if you made a mistake on your application. They asked me to explain what the expunged record was, and I would like to, if you don't mind, I have a copy for everybody. Okay, it was a record a false allegation was made against me back in New York City approximately 25 years ago. The case was thrown out of the court, as you could see, it was dismissed. They wanted copies of whatever happened. I have an official document from the City of New York with their official stamp stating that all the records have been destroyed or in the archives. There's this official stamp that if you ever want to fill it, you got a copy of it. I was being forced by the Human Resource Department, they wanted to know the details. And some of the details they wanted to know was what precinct arrested you? I'm from New York, and I don't even remember 25 years ago. They wanted to know the full details. I said, "I didn't know the full details. All I know is that my life was partly destroyed because of a false allegation." And the case was thrown out. I went back to teach, and that was it, until I retired from New York City. And what they wanted, what the Human Resource Department did, I went to meet with them, they wanted to know, I contacted the City of New York about 20 times, I got records of that, showing, asking them, "Could you open up the file? Could you go to the archives?" And eventually, somehow, some way, they found the record that I didn't even know about, I never saw, and the charges were totally false because I was someplace else at the time when the accusation was made. And they destroyed my life, they invaded my privacy, which is part of the constitutional rights, the First and the Fourth Amendment. The statutes from Florida state that unless I have a criminal record or I'm a sex offender, they can't go into my background like that. And I have the statutes here. And what I'm trying to say is, they sort of like destroyed my life right now because the records were, a copy of the record was going to be made up of what happened, and other people heard about it, and human nature basically says, "You talk about it." What I want to do is, in the last 30 seconds, 20 seconds, I just want to meet with the Board and the Superintendent to discuss this matter because my civil rights have been violated, and if it's not the whole Board, I would like to meet with one or two members in the future. You set the time, you set the date, please let me know.
All right, Mr. Feldman, thank you.
I just have a question for Mr. Bradshaw. Is this School Board policy or is this state?
Practice, if he admits that he admitted an arrest and investigation of all of your application, then it's going to hold him for...
This is Florida state policy. This is a Florida state.
It's how it's always done.
Well, I mean, are we any different than any other school district? Is this mandated by the state of Florida for professional practices?
I have the statutes, if you want to see them.
I'm asking of my staff.
Oh, sorry.
I can check on that.
Okay.
The practice that if you admit an arrest and an investigation of all of your application, then it's going to hold him for...
Thank you, Mr. Feldman. We will be in touch with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Lynette Mitchell.
Hello, Lynette Mitchell, media specialist at Crystal River High School. I had not planned on speaking tonight, and then when I saw the award for Crystal River High School, I just wanted to say that I now work in a beautiful school, a beautiful media center, and I love going to school every single day. The students seem happier. I know I'm happier. I no longer have a waterfall in the library, but only when it rains. So I'm just, it's just a nicer place to work. And even though, you know, you didn't realize it when you were in the old building, it's just so much better now. So I just wanted to say thank you, and we love it there.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
You know, she also, Ms. Mitchell does something really neat. She put these, those little scanner things that you can use your iPad or your phone on the books.
QR codes.
The QR codes.
Quick response.
And it gives the, well, you tell them, because I don't mean to take...
You still have time. Okay. They're QR codes, they're called quick response codes, that's what QR stands for. They're the little squiggly squares that you find on products now. I put on some of my books, I haven't gotten to all of them, but I'm trying. And then it takes the kids to a short video about the book. It's a trailer about the book. And then if they use their iPhone or smartphone, they can scan that code, and then it'll take them to a trailer, and it'll make them more interested in getting that book. And they can either go on the QR code on the book or in a book of QR codes. So, you know, either they can leaf through that book to find the book or browse through the stacks. So I started doing that. It's one of my things this year for my evaluation.
Awesome.
It's a good thing you're doing it.
Helen, I taught in the tropical rainforest at Crystal River Middle School, just so you know.
And they've been renewed, too.
Yes, they have, yes, they have.
Victoria Joseph.
And can we say congratulations?
Congratulations. Thank you. Yes, Victoria Joseph, Citrus High School.
I don't know why we're saying it.
Did you want to say it this way?
My ring, I'm engaged officially to Representative Jimmy T. Smith.
But has he told your school name yet?
Oh, I've known it for a while.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I came up just to say thank you to everyone that came to our CCEA forum that we had, and I also wanted to say sorry you couldn't make it, Ms. Bryant.
I know.
Yes, I was. Thank you, anyway. And also Ms. Deutschman, who got the date mixed up.
For me, but I'm so sorry. That's okay.
That's all right, you do plan on coming again, and so that's good.
Great format.
But yes, I wanted to say that it was well, you know, it was well attended.
Yes.
People really liked it. They thought that they had a voice and that you listened to them, so that was really good. Thank you again, Ms. Power. But again, in probably in May, so we'll be inviting you all again, but it'll be kind of like a pick...
In May?
Yes, in May.
May, may, may is...
Oh, amazing.
May, may and mayhem start the same, okay?
I know, I know.
All right, fine.
We also know that we have to try to reach our representatives right after session, and that Representative Smith gets out of session.
We may not know our names in May, but that's okay.
But it will be just a fun thing then.
All right.
Don't worry. But thank you again, that's all I wanted to say, was thank you for attending, and hope to see you guys at the next one.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone have anything else? This meeting is adjourned.